It's me and Cindy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, you know, we have a short agenda, like a brain development. Item E to item A, and we have both Mike and Justin here. Speak to the meeting we had today about junior members.
Would you like me to phrase it or why do you like them?
Either way.
Well, pretty much what we ran into, um, you've had a junior program in the book for quite some time as far as in our bylaws. And we've never really had any junior members. So recently it's come out and you've got one and potentially another one away, another one away, I think, too. And obviously looking at part of late her laws, there are the else where any issues. Children in the United States, you know, under eighteen, so what is our liability and responsibility? Obviously protect them, the membership, what they can and cannot do. Yeah, you know, I've been working on this for last week or something, just trying to hand around some details. The policy that we have out already that we've had for the last few months. After really getting down into it, yeah, it does get some work, it needs to be revised and tightened up a little bit, just. That's interesting. So we made phone calls and talked to ICOM. And ICOM is pretty much said the same thing, it's it's like building your payment. Their use. So pretty much what we're coming to the conclusion of is we don't want to get rid of the program. It is beneficial in part of it. It's nice having some younger members in there that are going to be full members here in the next couple of years, hopefully. So we've pretty much gone up with three options. Three options that I'm gonna bring up tonight, pick one of them and hopefully move forward. Uh, so our first option, and this is gonna cut back on a lot of my ability. Restrict members to responding to the firehouse only. So no longer allow them to go to the scene. That right there takes time. And danger liability you can think of as far as being hazardous situation. Cause ninety-five percent of our calls have some sort of hazard involved.
Are we looking at what you're telling us now from the standpoint of this is it? Or this is what we're doing until we have more time to look at this?
Yeah, so these are like the three options, the kind of.
Till we have more.
Right, yes. Option one is restricting members in the firehouse only. Uh, not respond to anywhere that's seen, members must stay at the firehouse. So even if they say, hey, we need, you know, a generator to run up here. They're not operating that generator here. That takes a lot of liability off scene ones, especially officers, drivers, and now we're not kind of trying to figure out who's where. Uh, they can still participate in trainings, meetings, and public education events. Uh, and trainings from what the state considers as the stronghold. So there's always someone there monitoring and making sure that, yeah, that liability looks on, or what's in charge of the training. I just have to make sure that everyone's safe. Uh, once the new restrictions are in place, you know, temporarily we get in contact with the FASD, the general council. Just handing in an offer, uh, see what they have on the books or what suggestions they have. And then we can add and remove parts of the policy before restrictions are lifted. So the first option is restricting the folks without killing the program. And then we give them solely back restrictions out depending on what we're finding.
And with item or option A, would you also be allowing new junior members to come in? Would it be restricted?
I'd say so, yeah, because it's they're coming through the door and we're saying, this is our policy for now. And it might not, it might be this way for the next till they're eighteen. Um, but this is the way we can at least, again, the liability we talked about, it's like you just restrict them to the firehouse. Nothing says if they go to the firehouse, you know, hit the hose couplings and come outside the truck when we're loading and hit it in the head. But it's no different than saying, just allow them at meetings, like fall down the stairs and it's leave. But the way I kind of look at it this way, the biggest liability we're gonna see, especially the junior members are on scenes. That's just because of the danger that's involved.
And the unpredictability.
Correct. Um, the way I kind of look at it too is just there's just a firehouse, it's no different than, you know, Bob and his kid coming down and Bob slips and in front of the firehouse. There's some sort of liability there with the general public. You know, must be locked the firehouse down completely. We're always gonna have some sort of liability. The liability that the village is taking on the junior members since there are responsibility because they are members of that department. I think keeping them at the firehouse is safest option that. So, um, that's optional. Option two is we suspend the program until we have more information. When I say suspend, the members suspend. Uh, program members not being allowed to participate in any fire department function. So there'll be a member on paper that they can't respond to calls when he was trained as any. That's when we overhaul the policy. Once the new policy is in place and we can implement it to make sure that it informs everything that we need to. Uh, suspended members may participate in activities and functions again. Um, so that's kind of the harsh one, kind of stopping everything now until we figure it out. The third option is we suspend the program definitely, and you must be eighteen and joined. That is the safest out of the three, but it's obviously not probably the best. As for recruitment retention.
So leaving the restricted members at the firehouse, who's responsible for them? The drivers?
That's the other issue. I mean, in a sense, we're all kind of gonna be responsible for.
I know, I'm just, you know, here's the scenario.
No, I know, but that, like Mike said too, with, you know, say we have a management fire, we can have thousands of scenarios, we're gonna have a pros and cons. I mean, we got a structured fire and they come to fire.
We just have to ma- you know, measure risk and reward, that's all. I mean, have you done SafeSport? You're gonna, yeah, so I mean, you know what the laws of minors in the, you know, in the eyes of New York State.
That's the issue.
Yeah, they can't be, they can't be there on their own.
And do you have an opportunity to assign somebody?
We, we used to, years ago, we'd have a firehouse, um, group.
Right.
But we can't.
That's when we were a sixteen man.
Yeah, okay.
We're not a sixteen man member. Um, doesn't mean that if we have a fire call that someone lives, uh, in Averville or whatever, they may go to the firehouse. I mean, I guess, you know, going back a little bit, we thought that in five twenty-one that we kind of had this hashed out. You know, we were sent this thing to you guys, then received emails from you and I.
And I didn't see it on five twenty-one, the first time I saw it was.
You know, and then we had a, a member that's already in there, we thought it was okay. Okay, then we went through the emails that, that you sent.
Yep.
And, and we kind of, just like kind of, well, this has all happened with the last five or six days.
Yeah.
Something has been going on for, for a month. And I, you know, so we kind of tweaked it a little bit thinking, okay, take a word away here, a word away there. Then I spoke to Andrew for forty-five minutes on it, I think I spoke to Jackie for forty-five minutes on it, Paul, and trying to explain. You know, if, if, you know, you guys wanting to have what they could do and what they couldn't do. We could have fifty things that they could not do, and then the fifty-one through fifty-five is gonna come up. It's a list, they're gonna say that. Um, and we definitely don't want this to go away, we don't want to, um, you know, have these kids say, well, they don't want us till we're eighteen, you know, but it, but it is, it is tough. It's, it's not easy, it's not easy. And, and each individual that comes in is, is gonna be different and challenging. It's tough too when someone's really eager to rein them back and say, you can't do this, you can't do that, you know?
So my opinion is if they're gonna be, wanna be firemen, junior firemen, they're gonna have a respect enough factor that when they get to the firehouse, this is where they can be, you'll have a section that either you have to be with one of the firemen or you need to be in the lounge while it goes on.
I mean, just saying that we're gonna have a fireman every time we have a fire call.
No, 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 I'm not saying, so that's what I'm saying, if there is one, if not, they would just go to the, the lounge. And, you know, they should be at sixteen, I know.
Hank, well, is there, would there ever be an opportunity? The driver's out, I mean, there's nobody in the firehouse, but.
Yeah, so thinking about that, if there's always maybe a dispatch, well, if we have a major fire, say I got two guys out of town, every driver might be on the scene, the PD might be down covering the radio, so please. And believe me, whenever we're in the, you know, the dispatch center with something going on, we're not paying attention to anything outside of that, outside of that window.
Hey, Mike, you're right, we can create every kind of scenario, but you know, there are ones that we know will happen and we just need to come up with a plan and for the ones that we know have happened.
And again, it goes back to, I guess, insurance, and what does our insurance say? Yeah, they're covered as a, a member, because the biggest thing I'm concerned about is your normal everyday, I guess, usually work, it's complicated. Slip, drip, fall, you know, the broom spring, I mean, when you get into the talking about like, if another member says something off the cusp towards them and that's all whole others. It's like, is there another type of training that we'd have to take now, like?
You'd have to take some sort of form of SafeSport.
Correct, yes, yes, that's exactly it.
Hey, the way people can interpret what is said when that is, that probably one of my biggest concerns.
Firehouse isn't a very good.
It isn't.
I just say.
That could be anywhere, that could be frustrating or.
I'm the wrong one that you're looking at, because I was at the firehouse at fourteen years old. And then once I got sixteen.
Those days are gone, Andrew, we've got to look forward, the world has changed.
Right, but we still can't take away from these kids that wanna get involved. We're not telling them that they can't, but we're sitting there going, you can be these junior firemen and we will let you go and learn how to be one. And what I mean by that is, you, it's kind of like you're saying, okay, eighteen now today. Here's your, now you're twenty-one, here's your first drink, go at it. And I'm not saying that, that's.
So Andrew, you're talking about, so.
Not a good analogy.
So Andrew, you're talking about option one, basically.
Yes, I want option one.
Question then becomes to Jackie's point.
Well, I'm okay with option one if the drivers are okay with option one, if the village is.
We can have twenty options, and I mean, it's, oh, you guys are the ones that are the A shape authority of having jurisdiction. So you guys wanted to insure us, and I know Janet is here. You know, uh, lawyers, that's, they make big bucks today because of all this stuff that goes on. Years ago, when, when we were the, the Boy Scouts of America, we had the Explorer Program. And we had no issues, but we haven't had that program in twenty plus years. So when we talked to Nicon by today, he goes, that, you guys can't do that anymore because you've been having it so long. You know, there's other departments that do this, so this isn't just something that we set at the firehouse and rainstorms on the other departments are doing it, and we kind of.
I think that, that's a problem, other departments are doing it, but they don't have the villages, you know. The village doesn't have their bats like you guys. Like, certainly it's very hands off. Uh, Blue and Dale, you know, their district, one of us, they have their board of directors from the district that runs their junior.
Same thing with Keene, you know, in their districts.
I mean, so it's, it's, we're in a very unique situation. It does get some point where we could, I mean, do we put it this way? Do we make restrictions and just see how it goes? Like anything else, when something happens, that's why we become reactive. For being very proactive, which is awesome, because we do cover all our assets, but it's safe to have this like. See what happens. Well, if the loose side of something does happen, I mean, say.
If we do go with item A, I mean, I think that is going to mean that we aren't like to sit around and not be proactive. Trying to get in touch with FASD's and county council. And unless you think there's another option, then. I don't, I think this is a great option, I mean, I don't want to discourage the program personally. I can't speak for, I don't want to discourage the program, but I do think we have to look at things and if we can do something so that they can be brought in, everyone doesn't have to be suspended until we can work this out, that's the option I'd like to just to go towards. If anyone's like you do think that's something you can.
Yeah, I just say maybe, I like, like I was saying. Scenes are the most dangerous.
I would agree.
And, and believe you, the firehouse is safe enough because besides, you know, feelings getting hurt, I mean, that is, you got, you know, artists like trips and falls or economics and everything else you've actually learned and, I mean, obviously it's.
Well, as far as the issue of, there's a fire call. And a junior member going to the firehouse, is there any reason to go there when no one's there? Would it be better that they could go there, you know, other times? What, what, what's your opinion?
Like, just it's hard, I mean, unless, like we said.
If you want to be a fireman, the last thing you want to do is when your paycheck was out, go to the firehouse and say. So men's mentality is, I gotta go, I gotta find out. And when you're young, you want to go, and, and of course, you think, you think you know everything, but you really don't. But it's nice to have them observe, but we still have to have that person that's got, you know, their thumb on this individual or two individuals or five individuals, to make sure that they're not, they're not getting into trouble.
Do you have somebody who's willing to take this program over?
We, we, we can, we can find some.
Okay.
But, but like you said this afternoon, you, the fourteen fifty of the, the thing said, had been off, I, I, you know, I mean, if there has to be an officer, then I'll take it, but, or someone else. But I think that we have.
I didn't, let me, let me look and see, that's a trickier.
Twenty plus year members, I have someone in mind, which is like, we, we just, you know, I mean, actually you guys are making the final decision, I guess, I never thought.
But the thing is, like I was saying, you're putting someone in charge, this is my opinion on this. So you can't put someone in charge of that now that you've taken that person out from the scene and put her in the firehouse every time. So again, if you want.
Let me say something. Um, the, the, the May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four junior membership. Um, I, I made some comments to it. I don't think it has to be totally thrown out, that document, but all I've heard from day one is that at a fire scene, it's, it's the officers who are in charge going down from the chief, et cetera, if the chief's there, he's in charge. Why would that be any different? Whether a jun- if a junior member is at the scene, it is not the drivers who are in charge of the scene. It's the volunteer officer. Why are we trying to change that?
We're not, we're not trying to change that, Janet, but we do know that there are many fire calls where it's only a driver showing up, whether it's a false alarm or not. It's just a driver showing up, correct?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, it didn't drop on me last night, but.
Okay, but.
There's, there's one, and.
Thirty percent of the time.
There, there could be, there could be.
It's a driver showing up, and how, how do we react to that?
Well, how, how do you, I mean, how, how do you react to it? When it's only a driver and no volunteers show up? Is the driver then telling the volunteers what to do? I, I mean, because you're saying it's only a driver that shows up, no volunteers.
That has happened, so probably infrequently, but it has happened.
Very infrequently, and it goes by the chain of command, in other words, if, if the chief's not there, then it goes to the next ranking officer. And if both guys aren't there, then we go to past chiefs, so.
And if they're not, they go to fire police, and a fire police, well, some will throw their.
So there's nine officers on the scene that, that could be. I mean, here we go again.
I'm confused about what we're talking about for a minute, so.
All we're talking about.
Janet, sorry, let me just re- recount this, so, so if we're talking about option one, then my understanding is then we're talking about the relative merits and risks of.
Janet has moved off of that.
Yes.
Fire scene, right?
So we're talking about the relative merits and risks of junior firefighter members being at the firehouse and who's gonna look after them, basically, is that right?
We did, but then Janet jumped to the scene.
Yeah, but, but they're not gonna be at the scene, right? So in the, in the, in the context of this decision.
And until we finish it off, until you guys get started, what you want to do, rather than doing more research on it. So that was something we brought up to say, why do this, or you don't want to get rid of it?
Right.
Yeah.
At this point, what I will do is if I can get all my transfer stuff I've never done, I will hand it to Chief St. Louis from King Valley, and I will go to the firehouse with the junior members.
Well, here's option four.
But I'm just saying, if we.
Restrict them from any fire call. All firehouse, almost.
With a firehouse not very called up.
Sure, they could be, they're a general, actually, they got all stuff needed down there. We put solo, solo trainings, they get to do pub events, they get to do meetings.
Parades.
Parades, yeah.
Because it really doesn't make much sense.
But.
To go to a fire.
And you can't do anything, and then when they're on air, it's launch. So I mean, that's maybe the option, no more fire calls. And because again, anything you're gonna learn is through training, most of the time. I mean, scenes are so hectic, you're not learning much on the scene unless you've done it before.
And then you're observing, you get to see.
Yeah, I mean, but it's just, you know, you do train, you can observe, well, you do. I just, I don't know, I mean, if it, if we're getting to know the fact of like who's gonna be watching these people, then it's.
I, I just brought it up, if they're gonna go to the firehouse.
You're right, you're right, because say like, you know, say I'm the only one there, we have a major call, like every firefighter, firefighter is on the scene, and I am a junior. I don't know, if we could get into something to break his leg, I never know.
And he, he's probably, she's trying to be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, and again, twenty years ago, it was different.
So I'm kind of curious, Janet, you said there was a few things that you thought that needed to be tweaked? Did you, do you know what they are? Are there a lot of things that you thought, or are there just a few things?
I, I, I read through it and I made some suggestions, and also the biggest uh substantive comments that I made were, uh, for example, it says, um, Rams will report to the highest ranking member of the scene or the apparatus driver. My comment there was, well, at the fire scene, the fire department officers are in charge. Thinking from the village's standpoint that we would not want these junior members reporting to the drivers. Uh, same thing in, uh, that one of their tasks would be assisting the drivers as directed by the officer in command. My other comment there is that the drivers are village employees, do we want that responsibility? So that's the same topic that you're, you're talking about, uh, here today. And that's why I brought up that at the scene of a fire, it's my understanding, it's the, the chain of command, as you pointed out, uh, Mike, are, are the officers. And these junior firefighters would be under the same rules that um, at the scene, it's the officers who are in charge. And if there's, um, situations where there is no officer there and then it falls to the driver, I guess the question is, how's that any different? If a, if another volunteer shows up, not a, not an officer is at the scene and there's no officer there to take charge, how is it any different other than the age?
So in reference to that, to that one, um, sentence, when, when Jackie brought up that question also, when we talked. So when you go to BFO and you go to IFO, you're drilled in your head when you go to, when you go to the fire scene and report to the truck. No, nobody freelances, nobody goes and does what they want, they report to the truck. And that's why it's got apparatus slash driver. Yes, the ranking officers, the commander are gonna be in charge of, of, of the scene. So, um, you're, you're told to do that, I've been doing this for six years, and that's what we are, I think, just go to the truck, go to the truck. And then from that point, someone's going to, to give you some direction, and whether that's an officer. And, you know, could it be a driver sometime? Absolutely. Our, our drivers are all by themselves, a lot of times, I don't think so, I guess I'd have to get the numbers, but they might be there for a couple of minutes when they're by themselves, so someone does get there. But there are a few things that, that we look at, but.
I think the other thing, Janet, is we're gonna go over all that, right now, we're just talking about just in one, two, or three. And one was firehouse only, which we're looking to take away, and then they would just do training.
Of course, we're not gonna take the firehouse away except for during the fire.
Right, right. And then we will look at everything step by step by step, and we'll have a decision, you know, next month at some point.
Well, I would hope that we could, we can do this very rapidly, because if we're telling someone all of a sudden, you know, we have one that's, you guys are supposed to vote on tonight to make sure whether, you know, and if you're not gonna vote on that person, then I guess we should go a different direction and.
Well, it's just, we're gonna have to, the thing, you're just have to ground running at this point. You know, if they decide to do one, then the phone call starts tomorrow. I mean, we're not gonna move forward unless we, but so like we're.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, we just need to go, this is what we're gonna do right now. And we'll sit down and get what we feel and what may come and.
Yeah, I mean, five, they have a phone call with FASD, you know, I don't know, of them things, and they're, they're in a whole, like, I don't know.
Got emailed, stuff that I just got before it came in here.
Did you get it?
Five pages, so.
Did you open it up?
I, yeah, I just included, I just, I haven't printed it off yet. So, are we seeing, we can.
Bylaws now have this category.
They have junior.
Uh, junior Janet, and under, um, like state guidelines for that, your ramps fall under the junior.
So. Operating documents of the fire department, there's a section that allows junior members, and does it further define what they can and cannot do?
That's what the policy is for, correct.
Okay, but is there an existing policy?
Just the one we have in front of us.
Just the one we have in front of us.
But in the bylaws, it's just one thing, it's not as inclusive, it's the bylaws.
Policies, yeah.
Oh, so the policies are the volunteer fire department policies. If you appoint somebody now without rescinding the policy, then they're subject to the existing policy. Just like the, I think there's a gentleman who's currently seventeen or something, right, soon to turn eighteen? His.
Just, just turn, he's not gonna turn till next year.
His junior membership right now is under this existing policy. The village board cannot change that policy, the volunteers have to change it. So anybody who is currently or will be, um, appointed as a junior member or under whatever name you want to call it, will be subject to existing policy unless or until the volunteers through their governance change the policy or suspend it or rescind it. Cause you can't say, okay, I'm a junior member now, um, and there's no policy, because there is a policy. If this, if this May twenty-first, twenty-four policy is in the corporate governance documents.
Correct. So, no, so what you're saying is if, even if we say right now we're suspending the program, that would have to be brought up at the meeting tonight, correct?
If these are not village policies, these are the volunteer fire department, which is a separate corporation's policies.
So I mean.
They're the only ones that can change them.
Yeah, so kind of, I'd say in hindsight, tonight, to me, we just have to go program.
Well, but Janet, in general municipal law, the village or town or fire district has to approve it.
That, that's.
Chapter two oh four.
That's true, but we don't have, at, at, I'm assuming that, was this ever approved or is this existing? What goes back years? There's nothing, is, is this May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four?
I mean, I'm not trying, but there were four sentences that were approved that are in the bylaws in regards to junior. This is certainly a more comprehensive policy.
The, the policy was created to cover everyone's butts and now, I mean, it's, it's deeper than that, but. But I mean, the thing is too, it's like Janet's saying, if we go with option A, that means that this from five point one has to be typed up for tonight and presented back to the membership. And then once.
And it's answered with all the changes.
No, with every change, saying they can't respond.
They haven't agreed on every change.
That's what I'm saying, you'd have to type this back up, you'd have to type this back up.
Yeah, it's not, it's.
Well, we've also passed things here before where it was based on this and this happening. Would, I mean, like.
Would, I mean, like I said, I don't think any of us wanna discourage people and suspend the program and add that up there. Is there any way that we can pass this and pass and getting in tonight with a re-understanding? That this is in place until your council and everyone has had a chance to review and make provisions to us.
I mean.
Does it?
Technically, you know, the law says the fire chief can make any decision as far as policies and procedures with his membership. So if Mike went up to lady junior membership tonight. And said, it's not into the policy, but I am telling you. You have to respond to the firehouse or not respond.
Item A was.
Correct.
Tell that.
Yeah, or say, you know, if we wanted to further and say you're not even allowed to go to the firehouse, that there's a fire. The chief's, that's, that's his responsibility, that's his call. And then the policy can be implemented, now it's in stone. Right now, here it is, this is what I'm telling you, it's a direct order, like anything, and then you create the policy, you know, and that. And then when it approves.
What you're saying though is as it stands, Mike can go back to the junior members and say, this is the deal from now on.
Yeah.
Or until the policy.
Just like.
Obviously, we have to change this because you guys aren't gonna, you know, you have issues with it and.
But we don't even know if insurance is, do we?
Um I have a call in for liability, but. I, they're waiting to hear back, I read through the policy, they are a member. And you have them listed as a member. They're covered under workers comp because they are a member. Just like any of our other members.
Might have a category.
Yes. And from a liability standpoint, if they're on our premise. And they get injured, they are covered by our blanket liability coverage. As far as being on fire scene, I don't have that answer yet.
And the only thing I can say, is any fireworks can be state laws considered problematic. Well, then you get into.
Well, and, and acting as a member, if they're injured while on fire scene, technically it's workers compensation.
Same, same thing as.
So.
So do we, I mean, regardless of admitting a new member. Do we think it's a prudent thing to say we support? You guys moving forward with restricting the connectivity of junior members and make promise.
Then I guess, obviously, we have to do something at this point because we're in ten different directions.
And I guess the only thing that's really safe.
We gotta get on the same.
Quite a man is what we're gonna go with, only, uh I guess addition or subtraction is, do we say? Can't go to fire calls or you're going to the firehouse only, or are we just restricting all fire calls until we get?
I would think based on not having any at the firehouse, it'd be a good time not to have them there, this is only something in the interim.
Yeah.
And probably was going to happen to scenes, how one of them has to have their mother drive there, so instead of the car.
Well, he has.
He's just.
He has cars.
So, I mean.
There's two cars in the family, one standard, he can't.
I think it's unfortunate, well, I mean, if.
I mean, if what's going to happen is a parent or they'll probably go and stay outside fire further, watch what's going on.
I mean, and that's one of the questions I had one time.
How they can do that?
Say we have a junior member whose parent drives them to a call and then the parent gets into an accident while he's responding on behalf of. The village with his guardian, it's.
We're just, we can talk.
I know, I know, I know.
So my thing is, I would like to approve. The junior member tonight, I would like to have. This fire chief. Tell them what their policy is for them. He will tell them, this is the policy until we write up the new one, this is it.
This is the order until we get.
Yes, and that's what I'd like to do, cause I'd like to see a couple more. Younger ones get in if we can, cause it, to me, it was a great experience, you learned so much. And I think it'll be very good for the whole morale of the fire department too, cause when they. The older members really, really like to teach. And like, so if they got drills and that, they can use them in that.
I mean, we have them come and they observe.
Yep.
So it'll pretty much be anything.
But yeah, it's, it's in the worst case scenario, these kids, if they join, then they turn sixty. Two years are gonna be in. I mean, since we're not, I don't know, getting discouraged, but. I know our one.
Uh no, they didn't have that back when I first. Andrew was, you were.
I mean, I was exploring those fourteen.
Justin was Ryan once, I'm just.
I'm just saying, there's a history of this work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great program and we need to figure out a way to solve it.
Yeah. You know, it's a little different here than other fire departments, cause here we don't run the trucks.
Right, we're, we're, we're different than everybody else.
And that's the only difference where, you know, we.
And that attracts a lot of people to be a member, just so they can get on, maybe have the opportunity to grab a fire truck. You don't have that opportunity, I mean, you're still talking, because you want to join, but.
See Dennis had to buy his own truck.
Right.
Dennis ride mother's own truck.
Correct.
Right, on play.
So, I mean, granted, if, if that's what we're gonna do, then we can like move on this and keep it going and. Do a profite on this and.
Well, we're gonna start making phone calls.
Well, I, I'd say, obviously.
Right, but it still allows, and also just to mention it, NICOM did like the program, but you know, they would work with us.
And then find out what, what Janet had to say about, it'd be interesting to see what sections that she put her things down in.
Well, that'll be after.
So maybe the most part of this is, is pretty good, Janet, is what you're saying? You're, you're agreeing with most of this except for.
I think, I think the biggest issue is the uh who's got responsibility for what? And I, sitting here, I can't believe that. Uh there are not other fire, volunteer fire departments in the state of New York that haven't. Don't have policies and FASNY, FASNY should know some of them. Maybe, maybe NICOM will, but.
We asked that question today, Janet, of NICOM, and surprisingly, he said there weren't that many of them, but there are. There are fire departments that do have them, I was surprised to hear that, that is what he said, wasn't it? There aren't that many. I think he, on the end of that, was a program in person, to, did it because of what we're discussing right now. I think.
True.
You know.
And I think that's what happened, I think the research was done in the beginning for life departments, they're saying, we're just gonna leave it alone.
Yeah.
Stay in. I mean.
Well, that very well could happen to us when you two get into this, but we'll just, let's, at least, since we've already got the program going.
So for tonight, I, I mean, I'd say no fire calls whatsoever, two fire calls or scene. And tell them the direct order of you can respond to meetings, trainings, public education events, parades if we have them. And then, or just that, fire, break there, and then when the policy is created, then they go all under that policy. So, you, as long as you give them a direct order. That's their last word given.
We're only talking about two people, so, you know. Well, hopefully, you guys will. Over in the other one tonight. And then we could just send them down and have a conversation with them. Okay, so. I have, do we need to vote? On item A, B, C, or D, or just agree that it's there, or that that's what we're gonna do?
We're agreeing that, so my motion is that we approve Annie Rock as a junior fire member. With the understanding. That Chief. St. Louis will give. A new order that fire, junior firefighters will not report.
Following item A.
By, following item A.
With the addition to item A of not responding to the firehouse during the fire scene.
Right.
Like ever item D.
Yeah, we'll amend first option.
Option four.
Yeah, option.
Option four.
Option four is option one plus the uh addition to no firehouse, firehouse. So respond to zero.
Well, and hopefully this won't be a long dragged out.
That's, that's all because that, you know, when you. Tell them to stay within fire tussle to come from.
They can't go to the firehouse other than during the fire call. You know, if they wanna go down, they can go after the fire call, or they wanna go down, do the people. Right? That's, that's part of what we're saying, right?
So that's my motion.
I'll second.
Now, is there any more discussion or any more anyone wants to ask beyond that we've got?
Um just, when, when we do finalize this policy or release out a draft, um. You know, talking before, it should go with the town and the village, correct? Janet?
I.
Yes.
I think we should at least bring them into the picture, but they.
The town has nothing to say about it.
But, but as a courtesy, I think we can at least mention to them what's going on.
As, as a courtesy, you can, and I will also remind everybody that our agreement for fire protection services with the town is about to expire. It's up to the town to initiate the process of getting it uh through again, because.
We need to put.
There's very specific. Uh procedure, the town has to hold public hearings, the town has to go. And submit to the um controller's office. And I don't know whether the town is aware of this or they've started that process. But just so everybody knows, that's up for, uh that's about to, if it hasn't already expired, cause. The maximum you can do, I think, is five years and we're coming up on that.
It's by the end of December, Janet.
Yep. And, and the town has, the town has a lot of work to do because there's a procedure that they have to follow.
For the town outside of village or a fire district, the program must be authorized by the town board.
Okay, any more questions? All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed? So pass.
Or you've got terrible tone, but.
Well, no, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you all.
Bringing up questions, thank you guys for looking into it. And we will continue to make sure we have a policy already, everybody to say.
And please relay our general report. Program to the, you know, that I think that it's.
I'll be there tonight, I'll.
Okay, yeah, that it's, you know, this isn't punitive and it's not based on anything that they've done, but it's just.
Right.
We're here to see in ninety-five minutes.
Right, yeah. Okay. Okay, um regular board meeting minutes, August nineteenth. Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any corrections or comments? All in favor?
I.
That's, we need a. Say it'll be, the UA annual conference, I'll go over one through three. And then when you.
This is the motion, that's for Kendall.
The other part. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
So it's proven that item C is the UA annual conference delegation resolution. Leave that's the name, Kendall, it's our representative.
I'll make the motion, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Very good, and then item D is UCI mountain bike series banners to be put up?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
There you go.
No.
Good, okay. Okay, I'll see him.
Yes.
Item E, um. Anything else to come?
Nope, that is all.
Um affidavit, that's three. Thank you, Jack Yumer, thank you, Jack.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Alright. Pass, anything else to come from treasury? Um anything under new business? Anything under old business?
Uh Janet, uh. Sent back the e-scooter, the e-bike policy with modifications and the parking. Modification, pardon, so.
That was today, right?
Yeah, that was just today, and Anita has graciously volunteered to interpret Janet's handwriting because I haven't tried. I've gone cross-eyed, Janet.
Oh, you gotta, gotta keep you guessing, you can fill it.
Yeah, I have to go back and forth, this is an E here, oh, but it looks like an A over there.
Yeah, that's.
If you, if you squint, put, no, if you put words in as you go and try and read it before.
It makes sense.
It makes sense.
Oh, that's, yeah.
And Janet, just to flag up, I think that you have a cleaned up revised draft around the noise ordinance work. Um that kind of reflects your last round of comments.
I got that.
Great.
Anything else under all of this? Um under layer items. On Sunday, I had an occasion to be there. I was lecturing at church and had a first T N V of what was going on at the church and. A parishioner had a stroke and, I'm sorry, a stroke, but in a medical event and passed out. And when I first came on the board fifteen years ago about. I was involved with the ride along and the police, and there was a call on Main Street where someone had been on a balcony in the back of a building and fallen twenty feet. We were there within minute and a half. The chase car for the ambulance at the time was there within about two minutes after that, and the ambulance was there probably within seven minutes of the call. At church, there was somebody there within seconds that was a nurse. A person from the choir that was a nurse saw this going on, stopped singing, came down and helped. I trod my phone, I turned it off now in the church. I'm waiting there agonizingly looking at the app, waiting for this to come on so I could make a call, by the time I called, no one was answering. Had stopped at the firehouse after, they said their full keyboard lit up with people calling, which I think is just so nice that everyone cared. And so, to make it long story short, the police showed up very quickly. After that, Preston, my brother-in-law, heard the ambulance call, he came up, another person from the ambulance heard the call and came up. And then the ambulance came and all this happened just like that, I mean, I think it's just great. It's still in this community, if something happens, all these people respond and all these people care. And you wouldn't believe the people in the back of the church, as I'm going out to direct each person that's coming where it is, like twenty people in the back all seeing if they can help. And I just thought it was really nice and really, just show you what kind of community we live in. But. That's all I have for me, mayor's report, hope you had a good summer, cause apparently it's come to a close. We have five more days with warm weather, enjoy them.
September's local summer.
There you go.
Nice, nice month of weather usually.
Is there anything on your commissioner reports?
We have our uh. You know, we're not doing any normal evening meeting, we're doing ice cream social next Tuesday, starting at five thirty, Ben and Jerry's is hosting it.
Nice, and that's where?
At Ben and Jerry's, yeah, right at the.
On the street?
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, they offer, so.
Alright.
Uh, it's a little different, people are, seem to be excited about it, I said I can only go for like ten minutes, cause I have to be somewhere at six, but.
I will tell you, we do an ice cream social at the Government planning officers association annual conference every year, it is the biggest.
Yeah.
Every one of those.
This is gonna be well attended.
We do it at Holsmish, they do it at the alumni weekend, they have an ice cream social instead of.
Cool.
Cause then people can bring their kids and they feel and it's not a.
Yeah.
So it's a big new thing, so that's good.
So that, after our work session, we go get ice cream.
Okay, parents committee, how does everybody feel about the Olympic art that's around town?
What, Olympic art may be better for a workshop?
Okay. But they, they, yeah, they, they. Okay.
I'm just asking which one, but you are, just like.
Just in general?
Yeah, Olympic art that's on town and village property.
I think if there's a more effective way to display it, that feels like it tells the story better than I am supportive of whatever that looks like.
I think what you're saying, the way I look at it, is a lot of people don't even know what it is, why this piece is heavily there.
Yeah.
So if you make that statement, and the, and there's no money. Two, where does that money come from?
That's all.
Right, yeah, I mean, I know.
Cause.
There's lots of arts grants.
Cause I remember when they put the piece from, that was down at the pump, pump house. Over to the CMDA and the first time I looked out my window, I thought McDonald's was moving up.
Hell over the red.
But I, I was clearing out my basement, which is not very exciting, but I found a ton of old newspapers from the Olympics and it had a lot of stuff about the art, which caught my eye. Because old Laurie was talking about it.
Laurie.
Yeah, but it's, you know, but I think that there, there are some interesting stories, and then honestly, there are some less interesting stories. So, you know, I think that um. You know, a way to kind of bring that together so it's more coherent. Could be a really great way to highlight this there.
But in essence, you don't really care.
Well, I think let's do a workshop, let's have a chance, you know, bring it up.
Yeah.
Give an opinion. Okay, any, um, anything else from commissioner reports? Yeah, no one hiding behind you, I can't see, um, nobody online.
It was an honor fight for a local, he was actually ex. Electric department at McCaslin, so he went down on Friday, Friday, he had a police and fire. For stranger escort. Down to Pottersburg, his daughter went with him, who was.
I guess so.
His daughter who went with him, who was in the Air Force, which is great. That's all I think.
Art, you want some written bullets um on childcare work before you can sort of bother John?
Well, I'm just gonna ask what his thoughts are, I don't think it's official on it, in fact, like. I gotta talk to, when I was there for an event, such as last Friday, or every day they had their Alpha program.
I got talked to when I was there for an event, such as last Friday, or every day they had their Alpha Program. I had a chance to talk with the principal there a little bit, so.
Good, so I think just for everyone, like the two second version is, um. We, we're talking to St. Agnes, it's sort of now gone into like the subcommittee discussion, so it's basically kind of Dean. Myself, um, and Kate, Kevin Beemish. And we connected with Kate Turner, who's the principal of St. Agnes, to kind of explore whether they'd be interested in the zero to.
And three, we did lose another daycare provider.
We did, yeah, and, and St. Agnes has absorbed all of her.
No, they've gone to hers.
Oh, they've gone, they've, they've taken all the three-year-olds.
So she, before she.
Yeah.
I had a discussion with her daughter, before she announced that she had a mall place, you know, herself, when you did this, so.
So, that's good, but I think that, um.
Of course, the success of this is going to be the state or federal government coming up to funding.
So, Essex County, I think, has some funding, and I know that Hudson Headwaters has kicked in. Fifty grand for the Taiconroga, um, childcare program, so. I think that there's potentials, probably for private or nonprofit sources.
What's the estimate on an annual operating budget?
That's what we're at, I think that's next steps is basically to see if St. Agnes has broad interest and then to get some cost estimates.
Do you, would you like me to go with you with Father John, open a discussion or?
So I think Kate, Kate was gonna talk to him.
Yes. That's true.
I agree.
Yeah, um, I think the next steps was that she, she was gonna have a chat and then.
Kate Thompson.
Ed Turner, um, but then get back to us, but if you're, you know, you see him regularly, so, you know, it doesn't hurt to mention.
Okay, well, I'm sure it's something they can do with them.
For zero to three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for every what, two infants, you have to have one adult?
Is that what the ratio is?
It's, it's a pretty tight ratio, but she thinks that they've got, they've got. Some flexibility and some potential options there. But again, that's part of the feasibility work that they're gonna need to do.
And they have space at the school?
Part of the feasibility work they have to do.
Oh, so we don't really, no.
No, well, they, they, they might, I think that they need to look at the numbers about what the potential demand looks like. Um, and before, I think this year they did have space, but they've got two full. Programs for three-year-olds now. Um, so.
Take over the cell science center, there's plenty of space there.
But I think.
And asbestos.
But I think they're, they're, they're kind of, like, you know, one of the better options, and I think that they have a couple of other options in terms of space as well. So they were gonna think all of that through and kind of come back with what they thought. Their figure was, whether they could do it or were interested in exploring it or not, and then see what's supported.
Was this all gonna be subsidized or reserved for the?
Parents.
Depending.
Yeah.
Portion.
Portion, for sure, or the whole thing, I think.
It may be. Yeah, but, so Raybrook charges two hundred and fifty dollars a week.
Yeah, I mean, and then this, and this is so cheap, like, like, let's make no mistake, like, on the spectrum of childcare costs in the world, this is. Still very inexpensive, but. It's a lot of money.
We've done, we did forty-eight hours at one point, did a thing. They figured out that. The, when the bulk were working, they figured out because of all, I'm not gonna be, but they said, they just said the other. So they were buying cheap, they were buying fast food because you didn't have time, they were doing this and this, and they weren't eating hook from the food or anything else. That it was, by the time the year was over, three thousand dollars.
That's true, I mean, we, we were paying. We were paying twenty, twenty-five, you know, before any subsidy or anything like that. Before we moved here, for three days a week, we were paying twenty-five grand a year.
And it was worth it.
It was worth everything, yeah. You know, it's like, and you know, it's like, so I think, you know, their childcare is expensive. I think parents, certainly from the feedback that we have, are totally understanding that they're gonna pay some money for it. Um, and then I think the challenge is, is, you know, keeping costs down and getting some top-up support to deal with just the, the ratio.
If that keeps happening, it's only going to be, you know, one child per couple.
Yeah.
I have.
Yeah.
And I got Shirley too.
Yeah, I have Mona, she was even cheaper.
I got a motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.